Good evening and welcome to the North Rose Wilkett Board of Education meeting tonight. I will call the meeting to order, and would you all please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and every nation in this world.
A motion please to approve the agenda. Paul and Jason, any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. Tonight, we have some presentations, and so we'll turn it over to Mr. Paul to make those introductions.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Collier. It's my pleasure to welcome Ms. Reagan Bogard and Mr. Maximo Hernandez Vazquez up to the podium. They are two of our superstar students from the North Rose Elementary, and I'm excited to hear what they have to say. I think both of them are a little bit nervous, but I told them this is the best part of the evening here from our students. So, welcome Reagan and Maximo.
Hello, my name is Reagan Bogard, and I'm the 4th grader at North Rose Wilkett Elementary. My favorite part about NRWE is learning new things like writing. We get to write every day and write about important things. I am a member of the Student Council. This year, I am the secretary. I get to take attendance, write about people's opinions, and then email Ms. Reagan to share her thoughts. I also tell students when the next meeting is. NRWE is special because it is full of joy. The students and the teachers all love to go here. Everyone is always smiling. The Cougar Value that means the most to me is being grateful, because I am grateful for a lot of things. Family, teachers, friends, and their school. I am also thankful for the principal. When I go to middle school, I will miss my teachers and going on field trips and the memorial that parade. I hope the younger students at NRWE will remember to have fun, be optimistic, and not rush through their work. And the only thing that would make this school better is a pickleball court.
Hello, hello, Testa. Hello, my name is Maximo, and I am a 4th grader at North Rose Wilkett Elementary. The very part about NRWE is that we get to learn and have fun too. I am a member of Student Council. I like that we can do things and decide stuff about the school. We continue to make decorations for our veterans. NRWE is special because the teachers are very nice and they help students do better. The Cougar Value that means the most to me is being respectful. Students, we care about others' people's needs. Some kids may be sad, so you could ask them if they're okay. This is being kind and respectful. When I go to middle school, I will miss field trips and the parishioner P.A. I hope young students at NRWE will remember to be quiet in the cafeteria and help students and to be helpful to their teachers.
Thank you so much. Board members, do you have any questions or comments to these two young people? All right.
It doesn't sound like you want to leave elementary school. What are you looking forward to becoming here?
Like the lockers, the lockers like have locks and they help us like get these, have our stuff secure. Like I bring my phone and some kids might, might, might be, will not like be able to see that with my phone.
I was pretty excited about the lockers when I came here too.
School dances.
I don't know about that.
Anyone else? It was very enjoyable to listen to both of you, and I know you're going to be a great addition when you do come to the school.
Thank you so much.
And I'm sure there's going to be a large impact. Very good to fill up a view. And Reagan, your pickleball. Sit down tall on duff ears. I'm sure this is our superintendent's verdict.
Thank you so much. I hope you have a great end of the school year, a nice restful summer, and a great new year next year in middle school. Thank you for helping.
Thank you. I want to just kind of highlight two things before we move on. That Maximo is such a gentleman, and he talked about the Cougar Values. He wanted to make sure that Reagan had a chance to speak first. That's such a nice thing to hear from young people his age, so I'm very proud of both of them. I'm going to welcome Mrs. Elliott and Mrs. McLean up to the podium and have them present the school improvement plan from both the community school's perspective as well as the Office of Student Services. So, thank you, ladies.
Thank you for letting Sarah and I come tonight to talk a little bit more about community schools and the Office of People's Services and our school improvement updates that we have for you here at the end of the year. We're happy to share this information, and we're both very proud of what we've done and how things have gone throughout the year. So, in the area of physical responsibility, just to highlight some of the things that we've done. We're continuing to have high-quality programming for our students in the area of community schools that's beneficial while still exploring and transitioning to some different grant funding. So, what we've done so far moving forward is that this summer, we're going to have programming at the elementary school and the middle school only, because we found that's the area where most of our students attend. That's where our families want our students to attend. And we're putting our resources there to build a programming there that's beneficial for the students. We're looking at different grant options that's going to enhance the safety of our students and also enhance the safety of our school buildings. We're continuing to provide mental health and basic needs to many of our students who need those services, and doing that through a variety of different grants. One thing we're also very proud about is the program of student workers. We're using student workers at the Navy's Department, but we're also having student workers in our elementary program, helping those students, helping in the program. We have two PTech students who are coming into our summer programming that are going to teach some STEM classes, which is wonderful. We also have a number of, or two students who will be coming in and supporting it daily in the academic program, starting at teacher aid type of thing. So, they will be coming in and learning some skills to hopefully move into the education field. We also continue to expand, continue our Cougar Ops programming, and it's been a great benefit to a number of our students. And we were very happy to hear at the conference last week that the community school grant funding is being expanded and from the federal level, and we hope to get in on some of that to be able to bring some of that money here to North Rose to continue to expand our programming and fulfill and continue what we're doing already. Academic areas, we have had our UPK registrations have been going. Our 3PK program for next year is already full, and we have a waitlist already going forward, and that's fantastic. We're continuing to pro-pro for the 4PK classes to try and get as many students as we can to bring them in to get that early start that we know is so vital for them to move forward. Cougar Ops programming has really been a great help in helping some of our students get on track to graduation so that they can graduate with the cohort. We had some students get those credits in January. We hope to get more students to be able to get that credit this June. As I said, we're going to have K-3 programming in both the middle school and the elementary school. Every student that comes to that K-3 program will be getting ELA and math instruction so that they will be able to maintain those skills that they have throughout the summer so we don't want to get a decline of course this summer. One very common piece that we've had so far for our summer program in the theme weeks at elementary school is they have things like Lego camp, STEM camp, performing arts camp for a specific week where the math instruction, the ELA instruction will be related to that along with the bridge training. We have 85 students already registered for our summer program at elementary school. We also have our Nike Club in district summer school. So, it's not a Bosse program, it's here in districts and the health here in middle school. And we're happy to have that because we can really gather what our students need, provide them the resources that they need, provide them the instruction that they need with teachers that they know and teachers that they have relationships with. We're continuing our social-emotional programming. We have a variety of different programs that come to our students. You can see all of the ones that we use over the course of the year. We've had several of our staff who've undertaken the opportunity to get youth mental health first aid trained so that they can be ready to support any students and identify those students who are in need of mental health services. Our summer PD is going to focus on poverty in students who are experiencing problems and be able to give teachers some tools for their peers. We're continuing our partnerships with many schools around, from many different community partners around the area. One thing I wanted to highlight, we have our Middle School Epic program, which is working with Midwest PIS. Several of our community partners are part of that program. And the quote that I've had on here was from a community partner who said at a completely different point in time that she's already seen the benefits of this program and these partnerships that we're building because she stated in fact that she wouldn't know how to collaborate with some of, to give the services to some of her students if she was not within this program. So, being able to do that has been a great benefit as well. And we're continuing to build those partnerships. We are doing a connective for case collaboration where we're working with some of the pediatricians in the area to try to see if we can remove some of the barriers to get students what they need and get rid of some of those right-to-left kinds of things that are way sometimes. Equity, we're still removing barriers. We're providing four parent liaisons currently, one in each building, as well as tech parent liaisons who I'm hoping can really reach out to some of our parents who are struggling to be able to use things like parent square and things like school tool. And I'm really hoping to help her set up some different opportunities in the fall to make sure to get as many parents in to help these guys use those tools. We use those tools so frequently, but we need to make sure that our parents know how to access them and find out how to best support their students as well. We sent a team last week to the Figure Lake Equity and Resiliency Conference where they had some great opportunities to hear from some speakers who talked about building relationships, building the community school balances, working to make sure that we, the schools really are a hub for the community to move forward and support all the needs that we need. So, we just wanted to finish up by taking a look at our, some pictures that show so far for everything that we've had so far this year. If you remember, we lost a significant amount of funding this year, and we had to make do with what we had. We have been, what I would say, creative, but we've also been very efficient with our funding this year. We made sure that we staffed to what our role is. We made sure that our kids have had fantastic programming. This is the middle school where you can see they took part in the tar lessons. They took part in cooking. They took part in some STEM activities, as well as those outside activities that those kids love. And we were able to have between 35 and 55 students Tuesday to Thursday through the week. Our elementary school program, our sunrise program will continue on until the end of the year. Average about 20 students in the morning. And then our after-school discovery program had going between 45 and 55 students. And again, they did Lego activities, they did STEM activities. They did a lot of activities to help build relationships, build connections to school. That's where we are at community schools. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to stand back this time because last time, you know, I was karate chopting the microphone the entire time. So, I adjusted myself for this presentation. So, the first one we'll talk about is partnerships. So, we continue to rely heavily on partnerships as we've talked about before. Programming for all of our students has been a challenge this year, especially for our students who have higher levels of need and we're not able to program for them in district. So, we've had to rely on not only our Bosse tool ends, which are often full, but also our Cougar Ops program as well as other area districts as part of the Wayne County Consortium. So, we've been able to send some of our students to their programs, and they've also been able to send their students to us. And then Cougar Ops has been able to provide tutoring for some of our students while they are weight placement. And because of some of that creative programming, we have two students that we previously were planning to send out of district that we've now been able to keep in district and be able to keep in district moving forward. So, just a testament to the value of those partnerships. As far as equity, we have a situation this year where we have students that have come from different parts of the world and need translators and reporters for region's exams because region's exams are not translated into all languages. And so, we have a family that has joined us from the Ukraine, and so we have had to find a way to be able to have that student access the region's exams in her native language and then also be able to give her a response in native language and be translated back to English. Right now, our INL teachers are working hard to complete those NICE SLOT assessments, which are the assessments that we use to determine the progress. Our students that participate in our INL English as a New Language program to see the progress that they have made and also to help determine the level of support and services that they'll need in the fall. And they'll be scoring that next week. Next year, this summer, we're already preparing for next year's 504 CPSC and CSE meetings, and so we'll be sending out parent squares, emails, and postcards to all of our families asking them for their preferred method of meeting participation. So, we switched to Zoom during the pandemic, and some of our parents really enjoy that because it allows them to participate and not take up as much time from work or be able to care for their children at home. We are also having a lot of families who just feel more comfortable having those meetings in person, so we're trying to be respectful and accommodating of what parents want. And then in addition to that, this year, in New York State, the Special Education Department is always tasked with a certain indicator, and our indicator this year is parent surveys. So, our case managers are working very hard to get parent input from all of our parents to be able to help us feel how, or hear how they feel about their participation in CSE and all parts of special education. For social-emotional, we're using CLIPS, which is part of the TACT Act, which we've talked a lot about. So, we're kind of exploring using that program to document all of our threat and risk assessments that occur within the district. And it's a really nice way to be able to keep all of that data information in one place so that all of the necessary people and key stakeholders who need that information have access to it. It's also based on research-based threat and risks assessments. So, it's really the type of information that we need to be collecting to ensure that we are doing our due diligence in exploring those threats and risks to make sure that our students' needs are being met and that we're keeping our schools safe. As part of that, we also are utilizing our MTSS process to meet on all of our threat assessments. So, if a threat assessment is current, and a threat assessment would occur when a student has made a threat to another student, a staff member, to the building of a community. And so, once that threat assessment has been made, if it's deemed a credible threat, we're obviously going to take action with getting law enforcement involved. But most of our threat assessments are children making kind of impulsive comments about wanting to do something because they're upset. And so, utilizing that MTSS process as well as our SFOA coordinator Brad Stee, our SRO Deputy Manziel, to come to those meetings so we can talk about those threat assessments and ensure that if we're seeing students making them regularly or we have a pattern of kind of threat assessments coming from a classroom, that we can implement appropriate interventions to address that. Last Friday, our students got to participate in the Special Olympics. They were housed at SOTIS, and I won St. Louis Thunder, Mr. Blankenberg. But it was the first year that our elementary students were able to attend since COVID. It was a wonderful day. So much planning and preparation goes into it. So, thank you to Mr. Blankenberg, thank you to Captain LaDale and Kristen Winflow and all of their staff and transportation. Transportation was very tricky this year, but they got us all there, and they got us all home. So, that's what matters. And then also with our social-emotional, we continue to partner with the Family Council of the Finger Lakes and the Behavioral Health Network to have satellite offices here in our district. One of the really nice pieces through that work with Epic is that Lori and I have been able to be part of the interviews for our trauma counselor and for our parent advocate, even though they're not necessarily our staff, but we know our students and families best. So, that allows us to really be able to tailor an interview candidate that we know are going to help us support our students and our community. As far as academics, we're continuing to work at our continuum of services. So, what we're able to offer our students in district from, you know, CPSC all the way out to graduation. And planning for next year, we know that we have a group of kids in our elementary school that are moving up to the middle school who need 1211, our special class. And so, we kind of shifted staff and looked at that, so we're able to provide that for our students next year. So, we're able to keep an additional five students in district by moving them up and kind of rearranging our staff to allow that to be accommodated. And our PD focus for next year, each month that our staff meets for special education, we focus on a topic, and we're really focusing next year on goal writing, which is something that we know is what drives our IEPs, as well as transition. Because we want to make sure that we are preparing students from the time that they're young all the way up to be college-age for their writing. So, we want those folks to be in the IEP to ensure that student programming aligns with what their goals are for post-graduation. And then lastly, financial. We continue to try and staff and use physically responsible ways to meet all of our students' needs within district and without, outside of our district. We also have our IVA and ARP programs, which allow us to do, to work with materials and supplies for our special education students as well as staffing. And then every time, I've been trying to give you an update about our Medicaid reimbursement, and that did not get updated, so don't panic. But last year, this time, we were at, or at the end of the year last year, we were at $102,000, about $103,000. And then this year, I believe our number is at $79,000, and that's not with this last quarter. So, we should be on track to surpass what we did last year. And our numbers before last year were not really needed to be, so that's kind of focused to try and get that up, to get that money back into the district. And then, I will leave you with this hundred. Can you make that play or not? Can I?
Sure can.
Oh, there you go. Oop, I paused it. So, there is some great music that goes along with this. I will not sing it myself, but I just, you know, thought it was important to kind of, you know, just bring a smile to everyone's face. We know in education and often in special education, there are a lot of challenges that we're presented with. But at the end of the day, these students that are kind of in by here are the reason that we do what we're doing. Thank you. And questions for us?
Wonderful to see. Happy children. Questions about candidates? John?
Very informative. How many, maybe you mentioned it, I didn't catch it. How many foreign languages do we have in the district?
So, the majority of our students are Spanish-speaking, have Haitian Creole and Ukrainian right now. And we had a student that spoke French, but is no longer with us. So, those are really the bulk of ours, and it is translated into Haitian Creole, but not into Ukrainian. So, you know, we're hoping that we can get to our state to translate them into all of our languages so that we're equitable for everyone, but...
Do the assessments start out in Ukrainian?
No. I know, it's a dead shot.
It's amazing.
Yep, so a lot of districts have been trying to utilize and work together to get translators and interpreters to come out to the districts to be able to translate for, you know, students whose language has not been able to be translated into the region's documents or the state assessments and regions are both translated into the same languages. And it's not, they're very surprising, which is like, they're translated in, so...
Again?
Yep.
Anyone else? Just a comment that a few years ago, I was involved with the Special Olympics too. It was just great to see how much support and love they show each other as they're competing.
Lori, you said the UPK3 is fully attended now. Can you, do you remember the number? And then also, how about UPK4?
So, UPK3, we have our morning program and afternoon program. We've actually bumped that number up to, was it nine? We moved it to 10. So, there are 10 in the morning program, there's 10 in the afternoon program. And currently, we have about five students on the waiting list.
And then UPK4?
UPK4 is at 38 right now, but we usually get a larger influx coming in during the summer. And we continue to promote that and push that as well.
That's for the fall.
That's for the fall.
Just for next year.
Yep.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Lori, just clarification for the math in the ELA this summer is for all students?
All students K-8 will be taking math in the ELA. In the theme weeks at the elementary school, we ask the teachers to start thinking about what they could do within those themes to talk about math in ELA. So, if they're doing Legos, how many, you know, how many blue Legos does it take to build this house? Or something along those lines. And then in the middle school, it will be more of skill-based, where they're trying to review some skills and trying to do those pieces throughout the summer just to retain the skills that they have.
So, how many students, so if it's for all students, we're not identifying students to encourage them to participate? Is anybody that wants to participate?
If anybody that wants to participate, the principals are considering doing some letters to encourage some families to do that as well. But we are also going to do a transition piece as well. We've had some ninth-grade high school teachers who are interested in doing a Cougar Academy at the end of the summer as well for our eighth-go-nine students, so that we'll do those to do some relationship-building pieces as well.
And Sarah, just wondering, how many students do we still have with our program?
So, right now, we have one student that has not had a program. We have two students that have not had a program all year. One of those students will be starting in ESY this summer. And one of our other students, we are working right now with Bosse's to try and come up with some creative solutions about potentially having like a Bosse satellite program or Bosse support to create a program here in district to meet the needs of the students that have not been able to be placed, because we have some students in preschool coming up to kindergarten who are very similar in needs and who also might be in jeopardy of not having a program next year.
So, would we consider though creating our own?
That's what we're trying to do.
Not through Bosse, I mean through our...
We have tried to do it our own, but have not been able to find staffing. So, we've had a special education teacher position open all year, and we haven't had any viable applicants. And so, we're going to continue to have that position open, and if we can fill it and create our own program, we'll certainly would do that. What we're hoping to use Bosse's for, if we can't find our own teacher, if they would be able to almost like lease the teacher to us to help set up our program. Because one of the other pieces is if we're going to create a program, we want to make sure that it's a top-quality program that provides faith and provides the best we can to our students. And so, if we don't have staff that's trained, we're going to need that training. So, that's where we're going to rely on Bosse to really kind of help us. So, we're really hoping that works out because then that also keeps our students here in our district in their homes and provide them what they need. And we certainly have students, we have students coming up that will be able to keep that flow. The issue just continues to be the staffing piece. And if we could find a teacher, we would make it happen. So, thank you. Yep.
Thank you, very nice.
Thank you, ladies. Mr. Blankenberg, if you want to come on up and give us the update on the athletic department, school improvement plan, district improvement plan, it'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Paul, and good evening. And thank you, Board of Education, for allowing me the opportunity to share an update on athletics. So, I want to start off just reviewing partnerships. Some of this we've seen already, but we've got a pretty good meeting actually. Meeting last night, we grew in elected new officers and board members. And the good news is there's more people involved in the Booster Club according to the members in the rest of the conference. So, that's a good thing. And we've got a whole hall of fame, we've got a hall of fame induction ceremony pamphlet that I put at your place this evening, so you can look through that. We had a great hall of fame induction that really is very active promoting and recognizing other athletes, coaches, and other people who are a partner in athletic program. Our North Rose Wilkett rec kind of got started last summer. So, we're going through, this will be a full year of events. We had a summer program last year, soccer, a fall program. But we're a program, we did that as a program. So, some folks have really stepped up and helped that on the umbrella of the Booster Club. And we're excited about participation. It'll roll home with the numbers, but that's all we're doing. We continue, we need the coaches, I need to help parents and families and understand about our athletic program, get to meet the coaches and some expectations. Parent Square is a great tool to get information out to families about scheduling and other events. Everything we do now is online. It used to be in the old days, if you wanted to sign up for a team, there was a packet of this and a signature of that. When it came time for pitcher day for the team, they set home before. It's all online. So, that really helps with, a lot of our things. So that really helps with stewarding a lot of our things, helping with the partnerships. I mentioned the Hall of Fame. It was really a great ceremony this year, coming out of COVID for the first time, and a great attendance. We inducted two athletes, a coach, and a honorary member. And according to the Hall of Fame, it was the best induction ceremony that they've ever had. And that's just sitting at, it's like, wow. Whether it was the gathering before that we had in the lobby, the induction speeches to invite the person, the person's acceptance speeches, the discussion afterward, it was very clear that there was a tremendous amount of, it was well-kept Cougar pride out of that. It was great. So I was very moved by that. Other partnerships, one of the big things that our teams, our CED teams do is community service. They've done some cleanups. Most recently, our track team went to the Rose Cemetery to do a cleanup preparation for the World War II time that that was there this past weekend. So that was a nice thing that our teams, they ring the bell for a celebration, help Lions Club auction, youth sports clinics, then follow the Special Olympics. And we did send five students to a section five leadership event earlier in the spring. Equity, again, you see the slide button, D for twelve, twelve for current sports and twenty-four sports. Social emotional, I guess to me, the big thing that we try to keep preaching about and talking about as much as possible is the value of participation, being part of the team. And from that, you learn how to be involved with teamwork in situations, developing self-discipline, character development, goal setting, social skills, you know, which leads to the bottom line, hire GPAs, better school time, less behavior issues. Just a personal thing, why do we hire athletes? I was at a college athletic department, and there was a bulletin board waiting for one of my kids. And it was, there was an advertisement for a company that was looking to hire. Their big headline was, "We Hire Athletes." You know, I got this really tied into, you know, what employers are looking for is, you know, people that can work with the team, work under pressure. You know, understanding that sometimes you got to put a little bit more effort in. You may not have a good day tomorrow, but you got to show up again. And it's all things that you learn from athletics that help us develop those adult skills for the workforce. Continuing with social emotional, the picture on the left is a basketball team, just a little team-building activity, and everybody had a different, something different written on their arm, you know, confidence, family, toughness, coach, leadership. Just a nice little, neat little team-building activity, you know, something about Coors. So, always important to have food. The picture on the right is that Section Five Student Leadership Conference that we sent five students to. The nice part about that is there's a Section Five Student Advisory Committee that plans these leadership activities for our students. And hopefully, one of our students that attended that has been here and given us to help plan and be a voice for Section Five. Physical participation, you've seen this, back in June, you already saw this, but it didn't have the spring numbers for the most part. You know, we're trending up since COVID. The only anomaly is about 2019, 2020, the spring numbers, it was a little hotter there. That was, we were paused. Where we got that number was anybody who signed up, because that may not have been who actually participated if we had at that time. So we're impressed with the nice, steady growth there. I guess, you know, goal for next year would be to add maybe ten or fifteen more to that three-hundred-and-twenty-nine hour. The nice part about the winter and spring season was we were able to have all three levels, modified J and M, which I think is very critical. Spring, I'm sorry, modified teams, we had seventy, around seventy to seventy-three of our seven of the graders participating each year, three seasons, which is, which is excellent participation, you know, a goal to look at there this evening, at least in that by the end of the season. Especially the involvement of our rec program, I think that's going to be a goal that's easily achieved. Talking about academics and athletics, last school year, we had seventeen of our twenty-one RC teams earn scholar athlete, which is a New York State Public High School Athletic Program, where if your GPA for the team is nine or above, you get this recognition. So last year, we had seventeen out of twenty-one. The four teams that didn't make it, all had maybe nine point something, something, so they were right there. The good news is for this year, we had nineteen out of twenty-one teams that had their recognition. So that's my step up. I won't mention the other two teams, we're going to cut them next year, but they were also very close to earning that. So they were really close to have all of our RC teams a hundred percent GPA for the season. So we're impressed with that. Financially, again, we have a replacement plan for uniforms and equipment, and we try to stick to that as much as possible. We try to use the appropriate purchasing to help us get through that, whether it's state contract, BOSI's bids, BOSI's cursors. When we set students to the state championship, it's a shared bill, it's not just each school doing that on their own. One of the big things we've done, especially this spring with other schools, is RIC. Everybody's struggling with bus drivers, and especially the after-schools. So we're all helping each other out. I guess the nice part is because we've been physically responsible, we've got, had uniform placements, a wrestling room, upper deck, hitting the walls, new wrestling practice nets are ready to go up there. High school gym, the floors get good, we've done this summer, walls painted, so some upgrades there. Baseball and softball, we've been, some nice stuff, small material team, you know, the last two years to bring those up, and how the project's going. So the trends get completely through the surface. A lot of things that, some of our highlights, I've shared with you the fall highlights, but I'll start again. Seventeen of our fall athletes received All-Star recognitions for their sport. We had one student who was a sectional champion cross-country, eight states, Austin Nine Hernandez. In the winter, we had three of our wrestlers win championships, AJ, Noah, again, Vivian Bishop, you've heard that name before, she was in the El Panski sectional championship. AJ, Noah, and Vivian all went to the state championships this year, again, did a great job. Twenty-one of our winter athletes were recognized as All-Stars. The Democrat Chronicle does in Alberta Rochester, selection Noah for wrestling, and Vivian got the recognition for El Panski. Our wrestling coach was the real league's Coach of the Year in that league, and he also received the Terry Justice Memorial Award, which is a pretty prestigious award within Section Five Wrestling. So a really good fall, I'm sorry, the winter and then the spring so far. We've got two teams that were league champions, our baseball team and Voice Times team were league champions. We had two individuals, track and field, Cory Tompkins and Avery Seager, they were league champs at our track, league championship track meet last weekend. And we had three new school records that were set also in track and field. Ryder was leader, Gordon Tompkins and Gilbert Seager all set, new actors for the school this year in track and sectionals this Saturday. So hopefully, we can do some more good things down there and set some more records. Just some pictures of winter and spring, events that have gone on, students participating. And again, special, what a great event. The first one that our area did was 2004, and it's been going in respect. Our coaches, our athletes, our students that went to help, you know, Sarah's already mentioned that, but it doesn't get any better than that. Sores did a great job hosting. It was their second year, so what a great thing. And it always is so. That's the athletic year. Thank you for your support. Can I answer any questions?
Anyone else? Comments? Paul?
When I first came back from Hong Kong, the baseball field was, quite honestly, inadequate. And I just want to mention that this year, we had two of the coaches from other teams compliment us on how good their field was. Thank you, Mark. And end the proof that does that, of course.
And you do some work out, too. Thank you for your work.
Anyone else? John?
Thank you for your input to make sure this very complex scheduling and athletics all fits together well, because it's a very hard job. I've had the occasion of going to sporting events for grandchildren, both in Newark and North Rose Woolkit, three seasons now. And I have to compliment, for our size school, we have, I think, is a good, very good athletic team. And the kids are good sports, they're competitive, they're nice people when they're out there. They're going to win, don't get me wrong, but they're, when it comes down to it, I've seen some very nice things happen on the field with the other teams. I'm looking forward to having a home on track. Thank you for your job.
Yes, thank you. I'm particularly pleased with the community service that the teams do. It's a way of life for them to learn to do that, and it's very appreciated by the community as a whole. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blankenberg. Great job. So, you know, I actually happened to be with Mr. Blankenberg last Friday as well, as we welcomed our Special Olympians and their partners over there. So it is what a fantastic day. They could really set the groundwork and the foundation for what we hope to achieve with Unified Sports in the near future, where we partner General Ed and Special Ed students together. Really feel like that's the next step for us. Probably start with like unified bowling and then move our way up the ladder. I know there's a unified hiking program out there, there's also unified basketball, but I think the core values, as you see those students smile, the core values of partnering General Ed and Special Ed students together is really something that represents our community very well. So I just want to say that Friday was fantastic. So if you see the theme continue, it really is a nice thing that we have going here. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Gary Barno and him for his efforts throughout the budget season, and thank our community at large for supporting our budget. We're the fourth-largest district in the county, but if you looked at our rate increase, we're in the bottom third in terms of how much our budget went up. Just tells you what a great job that we're doing financially in terms of making sure we're realizing efficiencies, that the money we're spending is very intentional, and that we're thoughtful with it, and that we're trying to stretch our money as far as it possibly can go to benefit our students and our community as a whole. So eighty-two percent of our voters said, "Keep doing the job you're doing." So we're pretty pleased with that. Couldn't do anything without community support, so really do thank our members of our community at large for that. It's a busy time of year, you have your May-June calendar in front of you. Last night, I had the opportunity to represent our district at the Daughters of the American Revolution Ceremony in Newark. You know, I said it, I was at an event right before I came here, and I talked to one of the people from Florida County and said, you know, "We're stretched in a number of different directions this time of year." Between the end-of-the-year concert season, last week with middle school performance, you may see people tracing up and down the hallway tonight, because we're doing a push for instrumental music and vocal music in the cafeteria. Was here for the high school presentation on Tuesday night, which was absolutely fantastic. And then last night, got a chance to celebrate our valedictorian over in Newark. Clara was our Good Citizen Representative from North Rose Woolkit, and I believe Mr. Bradley's already secured her for coming over June eighth to talk again to, you know, she started the year with you, she's going to end the year with you before she has the RPI in the fall, the dual major of aeronautical and mechanical engineering. Really just a wonderful representation of our community, so I know we're all proud of Just some updates for our community to start planning their end-of-year activities. You know, all after-school activities are going to end Thursday, June fifteenth. The last full date for students is actually Tuesday, June twentieth. And then we have half-days for students on the twenty-first, twenty-second, and commencement will be on the soccer field on the twenty-third. Scott has guaranteed me that it'll be sunny and seventy this year, slight southwest wind, which is perfect. You know, last year, we saw the clouds coming in, it was quite eventful, but really, just a great way to celebrate thirteen years of hard work from our seniors. Bring our community together, enjoy that evening. So looking forward to that. I'm happy to take any questions or elaborate on anything you need extended on. But as I said, busy time of year, great time of year, soon proofs of our labor, and kids are really getting excited to move on to the next phase and potentially see a pickleball court apparently somewhere. I don't know where they would have got that, but tonight, when I'm eating dill pickles, I'll ponder that thought. So questions, comments, or feedback? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. At this time, I'll move on to reports and correspondence, starting with our liaisons to the buildings. Linda, do you have anything to report from the elementary school?
Yes, there's always things going on at the end of the year everywhere, including the elementary school. Last year, or last week, wherever, the fourth-grade graders went to our three local cemeteries to put the flags on the veterans' graveside. Tomorrow is a special Memorial Day celebration with a annual parade and assembly, and the weather is going to be good. The parade will begin at nine forty-five at the school and go to the town office on Main Street, and then the assembly will begin around ten fifteen AM. Maintenance, transportation, athletic technology, and music departments have all been very busy to help with this event. Next week, there's going to be the Festival of Arts and Spring Awards ceremonies. UPK kindergarten and first-grade families are invited to come. And on March thirty-first, and then grades second, third, and fourth are invited on the first of June. Both nights begin at five thirty PM and conclude at seven thirty. I think it should have been thirty-first of May. My reading is. But we are finishing up the year and in the test, with the testing, and of course, it's exciting to see how much growth students make. In June, there's going to be additional building ride events such as Field Days, which are always fun, Moving Up Days, and UPK and fourth-grade graduations, which are always special for the students and their families. So that's another way that they're going to be celebrating their success at the end of the year.
Thank you, Linda. Paul, do you have anything to report from the middle school?
Yes, please. The middle school concert and the Festival of Arts was just a pair this evening. I regret that I was also playing baseball that night, but when I came in for the music, I was just stunned. I mean, I just stood in with, this is fabulous. And again, the middle school. May twelfth was the middle school's spring dance, that's the end-of-the-year dance, very, very well-attended.
So, that's another way that they're going to be celebrating their success at the end of the year.
Thank you, Linda. Paul, if you have anything to report from the middle school?
Yes, please. The middle school concert and the festival we had was just a pain this evening. I regret that I was also playing baseball that night, but when I came in for the music, I was just stunned. I mean, I just stood in with, this is fabulous. And again, the middle school. May 12th was the middle school's spring dance. That is the end-of-year dance, very, very well attended. As you leave tonight, check out the Wall of Fame outside on the passageway, on the, on the walls. Career information, and I mentioned that at the last board meeting, that they were gonna have that at the middle school. Very, very well attended. And then Mr. Blankenberg talked about the participation of athletics at the middle school. I'd like to extend that to find out that the softball modified was undefeated in season 11 and 0. Modified, again, three winning teams, which is, to me, is like fed. Modified tennis was 6-3, and modified baseball was 8-4. So, winning team at the middle school. Upcoming events, final exam, I think the same as you mentioned, and for the elementary school. Eighth grade dinner and awards ceremony is gonna be June 15th. And, and yeah, that's an awards ceremony and a talent show. And then that's for eighth grade, and then fifth and sixth will be on the, will be on the June 20th, I'm sorry, June 20th, okay? So, lots of good things happening at the middle school, thanks.
Thank you. Tina, do you have anything from high school?
Yes, Scott provided us some good information. The Geotech program installed a sprint, which they had designed and built in conjunction with rotary. It was kind of combined effort. Teachers that were involved in this are Brian Geary, Bill McDermott, and Victoria Kada. Scott really wanted to give them recognition for the hard work they've done. The Career Exploration Fair was May 11th, a huge success. We had 18 different speakers that came in representing a variety of careers. Each student heard three different speakers. And again, Lori Purcell, Alex Akoli, and Julie Gilman, hats off for their effort. Scott's good, recognize good people. Spring concert was Tuesday night, we kind of heard of that already, everybody was pretty impressed. Christine Schwinn and Carolyn Scrub, again, outstanding job. Seniors went to Darian Lake tomorrow. So, that's coming up. Festival of the Arts and Underclass Academic Awards made very good. So, high school's a busy place, things are going well.
Good, thank you. Linda, do you have any updates from Ford County?
I do. Tuesday was Ford County's annual meeting, and the New York State Teacher of the Year, Lily Green, was the speaker. And he was very entertaining, and you could see why his students are riveted when he's there. It was the annual meeting for the Ford County Board as well. I did want to give an update also for the Ford County Legislative Committee. And as now the state budget has been finalized, we do know that there was a 9.5% increase in Foundation Aid that districts had been working for, for the past 10 years. So, it's nice to have that kind of result. Also, with the budget, there's full funding for expense-based aids. And the state funding for school meals and districts and communities that participate in the community eligibility program will provide free meals, and that will include our district. There's $150 million set aside for new pre-K funding. And one thing that I was especially excited about because of being on Wayne Fairbanks Board, there was $20 million set aside to expand the fantastic P-Tech program in New York State. So, this is, is great work for the 23, 24 school year. We're gonna be starting next week, the Legislative Committee, to begin lobbying for our schools.
Thank you. The Handel Committee has been happy that the handbook has functioned well for us and board members this year. But we are at the end of the year, and if any of the board members have any issues or things they would like the committee to take a look at because, for whatever reason, please let us know. We would want to work, work on that if, before the end of the year. End of the year is in the end of June. So, let, let us know if there's anything that you're concerned about. John, is there anything from Autumn?
No.
All right. Jason, buildings and grounds?
Nothing new for buildings and grounds.
Okay, how about the District Safety Committee?
We have a meeting upcoming on the 31st, also the Palti Academy.
Okay. And the Alternative Learning Center?
Alternative Learning Center, busy. So, they presented to the Wayne County Superintendents recently, who toured the facility, met the staff and students in the program, so that was nice. They're also continuing to prepare students for the regents exams, graduation, summer school, and get everybody ready for the end-of-year requirements as students are gonna be transitioning either to the workforce or continuing education. And that's basically it.
Great, thank you. Paul, I see we have new first read policies here coming up. Is there anything you and the committee want to say about those?
Just that, I'm sorry that there's so many, but, you know, we're pressing on and we got more coming. So, I talked about, should we reduce some this month? And I went, well, we're gonna have the same over next month, so we're working hard on it.
It's my experience that policy never ends. It's always annoying, so thank you.
Yeah, no, of course, if there's any questions, please contact us.
I do, good, thank you. At this time, public access. Tina, has anyone signed up to, for public access?
No, there's no one.
No one, all right, thank you. Then we move to the consent agenda. A motion, please, to approve the consent agenda. Shall it be on Linda? The consent agenda goes through page 10. So, if anyone has questions or comments? I appreciate the, the feedback and explanations you've given us on some of our questions prior to tonight, Mr. Paul. And I think, anyone have anything else, Paul?
Not only the consent agenda, but I would ask that for the minutes where we have those home characters to say for the school designated below, can we have the minutes read that North Rose Wolka sent to the school? Page three for a matter. The BOSI thing, yeah, it says, continues to say, school listed below, and then.
All right. Okay. Anything else? All right, then all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Please raise your hand. Thank you, motion is carried. Moving on to page 10. Number six, awarding bids. A motion, please, to approve awarding the bid for the interior paint. John, and Tina? Discussion, questions?
Cindy, it's for the whole bid, it's for both bids. One resolution for both bids, just to clarify.
Oh, thank you, Tina, yes. Also, the B part, the bid award for the, for the capital outlay project, the two, both of them. That was included in that motion. Okay. Any other discussion? Then all again in favor? Thank you, motion is approved. At this time, board members, do you have any requests or comments or issues or anything you want to discuss tonight? Here again, we'll move on to good news. Anyone have good news? We've heard a lot of good news tonight, so that's fantastic. Paul, you have more news?
Yeah, just, I've got a little more. The North Rose Wolka team participated in the Wayne County and Pin Baguette. We also had 20, 20 students that visited Optima. And then, you know how much I like to brag about how our students go on and succeed. Nolan Sears, former baseball player, has been accepted to fight the cap on society. He's in Albany, yeah, at Delhi, New York, SUNY Delhi, so great news there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I would just say it was such good news for the Town of Rose community and the, the Rose minor young American Legion, and then the Wolka American Legion and the Wolf VFW. And there was a special honor last weekend to be able to bury a World War II soldier that had been missing. And it was our elementary school who moved there, putting the grave flags on all the soldiers' graves in our local cemeteries. And they did this a week early so that the cemetery would be dressed properly for this special burial. And so, if you are attending any memorial service, or any Memorial Day services on Monday here in the area, you'll see the grave flags on all of, all of the soldiers' graves throughout. And no, it was our fourth graders who put those on the graves. And they're always very honored to do that, so we thank them. Any other good news? All right. Then it's, we need to move into an executive session for the purpose of discussing, for the purpose of discussing specific employees' employment. Motion, please? Lynn, Ian, John? Discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. We will be returning to open session following the executive session, but we will not be doing any business, we will just be a journey. So, don't feel you need to stay unless you really want to. So, see you later, possibly. Thank you for coming.